...of May 6, 2019 to order, and if you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure.
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Here. And at this time, would someone like to make the motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmembers Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for the first public comment. We do ask if you come forward to say your name, and then if you would please write your full name and your address for the clerk, it would be greatly appreciated. Additionally, if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less, that's also appreciated.
Jamie Sterns? And... Okay, I'm just gonna start. I'm really nervous, just so you know.
What's that?
Yeah, please don't bite me. Thank you for speaking, or letting me speak to you today, as well as apparently myself, because I'm the only public person in here, unless you guys are public as well, about the recycling program. Currently, I have a petition on change.org called Achieve a Better Recycling Program for Cadillac, Michigan, and in it, I express the need for a better program, primarily because other local cities around us have a better program for just a couple bucks more. The city residents are mandated to pay for a program that has little particip- participation, maybe fifteen to twenty percent, as we know, and it accepts little material. What is the purpose of having a recycling program if you can't really recycle much of anything? Lake City, for example, takes all plastics, number one through seven, plastic bags and egg cartons. You're given a large tote, and the cost is $3.22 more than what Cadillac pays. Apples to apples, their trash and recycling combined, I figured our trash and recycling combined. Perhaps this is why our participation is down. If I'm being forced to pay for something, I actually want to utilize the full service. Currently, there are only sixty-eight signatures on it, but the hard part is getting the word out that there is a petition for people to take advantage of. Social media only goes so far. We need a consistent recycling program, and we need better education about recycling. For example, if you only accept X, Y, and Z, the people need to know, which currently, we have the pamphlet listed on the city website. But if you plan to change that and accept A, B, and C, then the document, there should be a document generated to show otherwise. Marcus and I have been working together, as well as Jeff Dietlin, and from what I gathered this morning, Ms. Green is now going to take all plastics, one through seven, to kinda cut out the headache of trying to figure out, do they take this, do they take that? So that should help. The problem, aside from recycling, is with what happens to the other materials not taken. They end up probably just going to the dump, which is really sad. And we should be looking into how we can expand on education of recyclables, as well as maybe implementing a plan for program changes, such as sending out a flyer with current changes, perhaps setting up a public survey, either annually or semiannually, to get the public's opinions and/or issues, concerns, likes, dislikes. Not only do these types of things hold programs and the companies accountable, but it also allows input to be given and reach the appropriate parties to let them know about their performance. Why do jobs give you performance evaluations? Primarily to let you know, hey, there may or may not be an issue, and this is how we help you correct it, so...
Okay, Jamie, you're past your three minutes, so if you could just wrap it up?
My last line. Accountability, consistency, and customer service are three really big factors when offering a service to people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Good evening. Randy, Howard Street Cadillac. A few issues I would like to discuss tonight. Again, I just want to touch base a little bit on, again, on the police firing range, and Marcus, thank you for the phone call back. My nephew was at the house the other day, and they're using automatic weapons. Twenty years ago, they weren't using automatic weapons. And being so close to Franklin Hospital and the surrounding areas, it sounds like a mass shooting happening every time they start firing their automatic weapons, so... Number two, last council meeting, you guys come out the next day all celebrating that the Cadillac Junction was a done deal. What happened? It's not a done deal. So why don't we get the townships, the county, city? Let's all go down to the farmer's market, have the meeting. Let's not have the lawyers make all the money, and let's have it and finish it up. If not, let's put everybody in stockades in the city park, and no. Cadillac Junction, we ran free water, free sewer, and we took all the money and how much it costs and ran it out there. The city taxpayers, citizens, have paid for that. Now you guys want to raise our rates again. This gentleman wanted to know how much a thirty percent raise was. This rate hike is unnecessary. We've run free water, free sewer, everything to the Cadillac Junction, and what's happening? How many millions of dollars? Also, the contamination site at the farmer's market, it took almost a year to come out with the information that it was contaminated and how much it was gonna cost. So, also, I want to just discuss the traffic. We're bringing in all these apartments, more people from Polster, the state police post, all the way down to Boone Road, it's just getting ridiculous, the traffic. We're bringing too many people into our beautiful community. It's a nice thing for the businesses, but it's getting pretty hectic. The traffic is just unbearable. Also, I want to touch about no increase in water. All the millions that went into running that water out to Cadillac Junction, and it's not happening. Who's making the money? Mr. King knows. You guys know. Also, I just want to discuss, you guys know, and I'll wrap it up. The construction company that's doing the construction at Cass and Mitchell Street, he mentioned, the owner, that he was only running a few loads, but I've got pictures on my cellphone, he's run ten illegal, they have to be illegal weight that he was carrying from the Olson site to his construction site. And again, I would like somebody from the city for I can show them. They've tore up the streets, and the manholes have dropped. They've tore up the water valves, and they've dropped in the street because he was carrying too heavy of loads.
Okay, Randy, thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on April 15, along with the closed session minutes from the 15th.
I want to make a motion to pull out the minutes from the regular meeting out of the consent agenda to have a discussion about them.
I'll support.
Carrie?
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
It's actually more of a comment, and I think it probably needs correction, but it's pretty minor. When I was reviewing them, though, I noticed that, let me see if I can find it quickly, it was... in the budget discussion. It was where I questioned the fund balance and whether or not it was restricted versus unrestricted, and the minutes don't reflect that. It was the fund balance that I was asking about, it just talks about the general fund. And there's a difference.
We can approve that with that amendment.
Okay, that's all. Yeah.
Was there already a motion? Oh, okay.
So I'll make a motion to adjust the minutes to reflect what the question was related to the fund balance, not the general fund. The amount, when Robert was talking about the twenty-nine percent fund balance that we had, or savings, or, you know, amount beyond what was in the budget.
That's the fund balance.
That was what my question was referring to.
That's a good clarification.
I would support passage of the minutes with that amendment.
Okay. All right, so where are we at? We need to...
There's a motion and support, so we need to have a roll call.
To support, to approve the minutes with that amendment.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Now, we'll need another motion for the closed...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the closed session.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. This evening, we have a proclamation that we're going to present. And it looks like we have someone here from the postal carriers, so if you want to come up to the podium and introduce yourself.
I'm Ruth Reddy. I'm with the letter carriers in the Cadillac Post Office, almost thirty years now, so also the branch president of the NALC in Cadillac, and we're the ones that spearhead the food drive.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Wonderful, okay. So this proclamation is in honor of Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive. The day is May 11, 2019. Whereas every year, on the second Saturday of May, letter carriers across the country collect nonperishable food at a part of the nation's largest, as a part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks.
And whereas the letters, the letters, letter carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than 1.67 billion pounds of food have been collected. And whereas we recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities, all the food collected in our community stays in our community, and we support carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. And whereas we also recognize the noteworthy milestone of twenty-seven years that the National Letter Carrier Food Drive celebrates in 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Carla J. Philkins, mayor of the city of Cadillac, Michigan, would like to recognize and proclaim Saturday, May 11, 2019, as Letter Carriers Food Drive Day in the city of Cadillac. And I encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing nonperishable foods in or near your mailbox on Food Drive Day. Your letter carrier will pick it up while delivering the mail, and together, we can all help to feed the hungry in our community. In witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Cadillac, Michigan, to be affixed this sixth day of May, 2019.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I like your shirt. Oh, their food drive t-shirt, yeah. Cute.
Staying found hunger, good.
Nice job, thank you for doing that.
Okay, that takes us to some communications, Carrie.
Carrie, before you begin, I'm gonna take this first one, if that's okay.
Great.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the city council, in a moment, I'd like to introduce Christophe Levine. Christophe is essentially the person in charge of running the boat company here in Cadillac, Michigan now. It's gone through a variety of ownership changes over the years, and is currently owned by a very old French family company called Group Benito. Christophe is here this evening with a very special request as the company is going to be bringing in several hundred attendees from several hundred dealers across the country to go to the dealer show that Cadillac is going to be host to, and as a part of that, has asked us for a unique request. That request is to utilize the public boat dock area adjacent to the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion during the week that the show is taking place, which is September 22 through September 27. So this is very late in the season, where ordinarily, it would just be open for general public use. The show starts on a Sunday and ends on a Friday. There will be some intermittent times throughout that week where the docks will likely be vacated. However, it would be easier from a logistical perspective for us to work with the company on blocking that area so that they can have vessels moored there in order to showcase them to various dealers that are coming in, along with showcasing vessels also at their test center and other places throughout the community. So I'd like to introduce Christophe, perhaps to come forward and maybe just reintroduce yourself and the company and a little bit about the show.
Sure, thank you very much, Marcus. Hello, everybody. You said it all. So my name is Christophe Levine, I'm the president of RBH Reg Boat Holdings, which is a company now acquired by Group Benito. Group Benito is a French company, effectively created in 1870, and the third generation is still in charge of the company, which is a fantastic, exceptional company owned by a woman that irritated that company in the 50s and make one of the largest, the largest boat builder in the world. Group Benito is a seven thousand employees around the world. We have a revenue of 1.2 billion euros every year, so it's one of the largest boat builders in the nation. Almost five years ago, they acquired Four Winds, Glaston, Scarab, and Wellcraft boats here in Cadillac, and the entities and the production facilities. Since that time, we have had two additional brands, two international brands. We are boat builders of Jano and Benito product now in Cadillac. So we are importing boats from Europe, from Poland, and from France to be built in Cadillac, Michigan, which is an exceptional thing to do in this difficult time for the industry. So good company. We have here in Cadillac about 580 employees building boats. We recently invested 2.3 million dollars in a new factory refurbishing the sport plant. So we're really investing in the community, very proud to build boats in Cadillac that we export in about fifty-five countries around the world. It's good exporters of goods from Cadillac. We're making about 3,500 boats every year in Cadillac. We have been a little bit challenged with the tariff, you may have heard about that, and/or partners, the Canadians, European, and Chinese, and Mexican customers, countries have imposed tariffs in the boatbuilding industries, in retaliations to aluminum and steel tariff imposed by the White House. I have a good news for you, though. Canadians lifted their tariff a week ago. So this is an excellent news for Cadillac. We have a lot of Canadian customers, and we hope it will help to support our industry and being able to re-export boats in Canada again. That's definitely good, good news, very good news for us. So effectively, I am asking the city of Cadillac some support. We are going to host a dealer meeting in September, the 27th, 27th. We will have about 500 guests from many countries coming in Cadillac. I made an executive decision to host the meeting in Cadillac because we trust the value of northern Michigan. We think it's a great way to show values, to bring the people here in the place we build the boat, and show a little piece of America, a little bit of Michigan, in Cadillac. We will have 500 persons coming, many suppliers, and we have reserved all the hotel rooms in Cadillac. And we have to do that in two ways because we don't have enough hotel rooms. So it will take the entire week instead of two days just because we want to spread out the accommodations and the people in Cadillac. We will have about twenty to thirty boats on the lake Cadillac. Some of them will be up to forty feet. We're launching some new big boats, and we need space. And I am a little bit concerned that our test center is too small to host all the boats. That's the reason I ask Marcus if we could borrow potentially for the night or for a few days, the city dock, to make sure we can store some of these boats on the lake. We cannot move in and out that many boats in one day, and we want to make sure we have a possible access to the dock. We are also interested to look at parking spot, I was not sure, and today, my team tell me, yes, that would be good if we could find additional parking close to the test center. I think there is a parking behind Family Fair, but I don't know if it's city-owned or if it's private-owned, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's a combination.
Combination. We can also put all cars in your driveway. So we may, if you can help me there, I don't know who to talk to, that would be good. We don't want to be too far away because we don't want the people to work too much, but being close to the test center would be good. And I, it's not a request, but it's just an option. If we had an extremely bad weather, and it did happen once in our dealer meeting, we may need to be able to host boats somewhere downtown Cadillac. And I don't know if the new market would be a place we could put some boats to cover during a big storm. I don't expect a storm, this is why we do the meeting in Cadillac, the weather is always beautiful, but that's maybe an opportunity.
You have an icebreaker.
We do. We do have an icebreaker. And the fishermen don't like when we're using it because it's not good. And obviously, as you know, we are very dedicated to do business in Cadillac. We hire a lot of people from Cadillac and the surrounding, and I hope that bringing the people in Cadillac will help our business. The people that are coming are all professionals, dealers, they are business owners, they are going to bring wealth in the community, and also, we hope to sell a lot of boats next year for the people of Cadillac and for our organization. So thank you very much, by the way, for your time tonight, and I can answer any question if you have.
I think it's very exciting.
Did you give us the dates?
Yes, yeah. The 27th, so going to the 27th, yeah.
If I may make a request as well to the city council, when making the motion, perhaps to just simply authorize allowing staff to work out logistics that may be needed on the fly, that'd be helpful. Especially if some of this is weather-dependent.
Right.
Very good.
Does this coincide with any other event in Cadillac, any other festivals that the...
Not that I'm aware of. We were thinking that perhaps the Craft Beer Fest might be during that period of time, but I'm not, I don't think it is.
Are there any concerts in the park that late in the...
Usually not.
No, not that late, oh, okay. I was gonna say, it'd be nice entertainment for you.
Yeah.
We did check the availability on the hotel room to make sure that they were available. There is a big church event a week after, I think, and so that's the reason also we picked that time, because it was open and the rooms were available. We reserved them all.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the request from Group Benito allowing them to reserve public spaces during their annual dealer show on Sunday, September 22, 2019, through Friday, September 27, 2019, along with authorizing city staff to work on other logistics that may be necessary for that event.
Support.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Cadillac will make you proud.
I'm sure they will. You already are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Craft Beer Fest is the 28th, so it's the day after the last day of their show.
Oh, okay.
They don't use the, well, they use the park.
That'll be a tight setup.
They don't, they set up that day.
I'm sure that Joy's already probably aware of that.
We will be done by midday on the 27th.
Oh, that's good. They don't usually stay until the midday.
The Visitors Bureau is well aware of their...
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Before you, you have a request from the Cadillac Rotary Stride for Strive, a Memorial Day 5K event. This is an event that they've had every year, and it has some road closings. And I think that's about it, really.
Make a motion to approve the closure of Linden between Chestnut and West Division from eight to eight forty-five on May 27th for the Cadillac Rotary Stride for Strive Memorial Day 5K event.
Support.
Next thing is the Memorial Day Parade.
We have to vote.
Oh, we have to have them. Oh, sorry. Roll call, please.
Roll call is... Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
The next thing is the Memorial Day Parade. It's a request, the parade to be held on May 27 at 10:00 a.m., the setup beginning at nine.
I'll make that motion, excuse me, to approve the parade route for the Memorial Day Parade to be held on May 27, 2019, at 10 o'clock a.m., with parade setup beginning at 9 o'clock a.m.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
The last thing we have is the Cadillac Lakes Cruise Car Show. There's a banner request, and also, street and parking lot closures, June 8 through the 9. I do not have a copy of the banner request, but we have requested it, so when we get that, I will present it.
I think it's in the packet, isn't it? I saw a banner for something.
This is our car show that changed names, right?
Yes.
That's Back to the Bricks, but it's our, it's...
No, it's Cadillac.
It's got, it has...
Its own name.
It's got the banner request, but it's kind of blank.
I see, yep.
I will make a motion, let's see, where are we? To approve the display of a banner from June 3, 2019, to June 10, 2019, and the street and parking lot closures on June 8 through 9, 2019, as presented for the Cadillac Lakes Cruise Car Show. That's a lot of streets are going.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Carrie.
Okay, this evening, we have several introductions, ordinances, and resolutions.
We do, we do. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. At this time, it would be appropriate... At this time, it would be appropriate for the council to establish a public hearing for May 20th, 2019, regarding our ordinance establishing the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2020.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance, the ordinance establishing a general appropriations act for fiscal year 2020 and to set a public hearing for May 20th.
Support.
Councilmember Swolman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next three requests are recommendations that were all unanimously moved forward from our planning commission at their last meeting to the city council. I have asked our community development director, John Wallace, this evening to provide city council with a little more of an in-depth presentation than what we have normally done in the past when introducing items for the setting of a public hearing in an effort to not have as lengthy of a presentation on the public hearing date itself, given on the 20th, we're going to have, you know, a half a dozen, give or take, public hearings on that agenda. So this is an effort to try to streamline the flow of the communication. John, if you wouldn't mind with the first one, and as you're getting that ready, the first one is a request to set a public hearing for May 20th regarding an amendment to our zoning map.
Do you know which one?
And this has to deal with the homeless shelter matter that we've discussed on several
Do you know which one it is? Is it the New Hope or the Munson?
It's the Munson.
It's Munson's first.
Oh, Munson's first, okay. Okay. Sorry if I threw you off there. Thank you, John.
Okay, the Munson rezoning is a continuation of prior action by the planning commission and the city council. The hospital rezoned a large part of the block in front of the hospital for the McCauley Center for the daycare operation. And during that process, it came to their attention that there was two lots that inadvertently were left off that rezoning. And so the hospital needed to go back and catch up and get those two lots into the same zoning district as the McCauley Auditorium. And then also, they own most of the block with the exception of one lot immediately to the east of that block. And so they also wanted to move that rezoning at the same time. The applicant was Dean DeCraiger of DK Design Group, and he was working on behalf of Munson Healthcare Cadillac Hospital. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of six lots, which are zoned OS1 or R3 to an OS2 zoning district. These include lots G and, or lots nine and 10 of Block 20, as well as lots 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 of Block 21. The purpose and use of the property would be for a mixed-use office building and daycare You can see on this map, the two lots on Block 20, that completed the block on the McCauley Auditorium site, and you can see the, almost the entire block immediately to the east of Block 20, which is Block 21, with the exception of one lot, would also be going into an OS2 district. And that OS2 is the most flexible for a variety of the uses that the hospital would wish to put that portion of their campus to. All of the property involved is owned by the hospital and is contiguous to the broader hospital campus. The entire campus is being used for medical services and accessory support uses, uses. This rezoning would place all of the Munson-owned property on blocks 20 and 21 in the OS2 district. The entire Munson Healthcare Campus would fall within either the OS1 or the OS2 zoning districts. That would be the closest zoning they, they could have to fulfill their master planning concepts for the campus. One of the main reasons we were looking at doing this, that Munson Healthcare is one of Cadillac's largest employers and is an economic driver not only for the city, but for this area of the city in general, the OS2 district is the most appropriate district and would allow the campus to grow in both the amount of medical services and also increase the range of medical services that would be available. And that was the motion that the planning commission made, and as Marcus said, they recommended unanimously to the city council that the rezoning be approved. And again, you're not taking that action tonight, it's being introduced, but we're just trying to conserve on time for the next meeting where we have all those public hearings.
I didn't get a chance to watch that planning commission, but did anybody show up to, to object? Because I know when we did the daycare rezoning, there were people worried about traffic or they were worried about the kids outside.
At, at the last meeting, I don't believe anyone showed up at the meeting. I think there was a prior meeting where somebody objected to the future playground connected to the use, but they were not objecting to the use of the daycare center in the McCauley Auditorium. I'll cover this one. I threw this into the same presentation because it was related to the hospital, but it's an accessory use amendment. It's a text amendment to our zoning ordinance, which is Section 46-657. It's an amendment which involves the creation of a subsection B, which addresses accessory use locations. Section A largely deals with the range of accessory uses that there's potential for.
And just, just for clarification, so this is information relating to the second setting of a public hearing that's on your agenda this evening, and also at the last planning commission meeting where they moved, bless you, where they moved this item forward, there was no protest about it. It was just people there in support.
The wording for the text amendment is up on the screen. Basically says accessory use locations. In addition to being permitted on the same parcel as a primary use, accessory uses to non-residential uses may be approved on a lot which is separate from the lot on which the primary use is located if such a lot is directly contiguous or contiguous across the public street right of way and within the same zoning district classification. Such accessory uses shall be accessory to a use permitted by right and which is operating from within an enclosed building. Accessory uses not on the same parcel as the primary use they serve shall also be required to undergo administrative site plan review by the city's department heads and the consulting engineer. So accessory uses typically would be on the same parcel as the use. This was written in anticipation of the hospital and other major users, possibly industrial users, where they might have support activities. In the hospital's case, the support playground. In other cases, it may be support parking or other kinds of uses. But when there's sort of a master plan or use plan for a major facility, and we didn't extend this to residential uses, but merely for commercial or industrial, that these accessory uses could be considered as long as they were in keeping with the major business or company's plan for their property and that it fit the overall development scheme for that use.
So, John, just, just to overly simplify, in the instance of the hospital, you've got the, you've got the daycare facilities on one parcel, and then on the separate adjacent and contiguous parcel, you would then have the accessory use, which in this case is the playground. And without this amendment into the code, that wouldn't be allowed. But because of how it was thought of to be accommodating to these types of activities, that's where the amendment came forward and was approved by the planning commission to be recommended for this body's consideration at a future public hearing.
And, you know, it will require that it undergo administrative review so that both myself and all the department heads and the city engineer would all be looking at for potential impacts and site location features of any accessory use. Should I roll into the other one?
Well, why don't, it probably would make sense at this point.
To make the motion on the first two?
On the first two, yep. And then, John, why don't you get ready for the third one?
So it'd be motion on B?
All right.
I'll make, go ahead, go. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending zoning map and set a public hearing for May 20th, 2019.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Swolman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
And this is the zoning map amendment concerning Munson.
That's correct.
Because they're written the same way on a support document.
The first one is Munson and the other one is the homeless shelter.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. He was talking about D and we're not to D yet.
Yeah, well, and they're written, they're written the same way in the language is what I was having, wanting to include in there.
Yes. Okay. So now we need the motion for C.
Or DC.
I will make another motion to adopt the resolution to introduce the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance regarding accessory uses and to set a public hearing for May 20th.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Swolman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. On to the last one.
Now that we got that out of the way.
The final one. Again, it's a rezoning issue. It's in regard to the New Hope Shelter. As you are probably aware from prior actions, we've been in a, about a two-year process discussing homeless shelter needs and, and how that's best provided for in the last several months. New Hope has decided the best approach for them in the way of service and as well as cost containment would be to centralize the homeless operation and putting their family homeless shelters together with their group shelters for both men and women, and everything would be housed within, within one building under one roof. That allows them to better manage the facility. It also means that they would be not, they would be able to reduce the amount of time that the residents were being forced to be outside the shelter. That in turn has a positive benefit for businesses and different locations within the community where the homeless were required to basically seek shelter while they were outside of the primary shelter. So it is a big improvement that way. I will skip over the special land use, which they needed to get through the planning commission. The special land use was approved by the planning commission. It stops at the planning commission level. It was approved by them, subject to, conditional upon the council granting the rezoning, which is the subject that's being introduced tonight. And the rezoning request is to rezone a site on Lincoln Street, just east of the Wexford County Jail, from an R1 residential district to an RM2 residential district. That, that rezoning essentially would take it out of more of a single-family residential district and place it into a multi-family district, so future development that might be in that district would be of a, you know, apartment type or duplex or higher type of development. So it would be compatible with that type of rezoning. I think I already mentioned, all the shelter types would be combined within one facility. The planning commission discussed the closure of the remaining shelters within the city within a two-year period, giving them time to gradually transition to the new facility. And at that point in time, everything would be housed within, under one roof. The site location, you can see at the top of the map, you can see the county jail located there, and immediately to the east of the county jail is the site of the proposed homeless shelter. You see a little blue area kind of nestled in the proposed homeless shelter site. I think that's a kind of a retention area for the county jail. You can see from some of the text on that map that much of that area is already in institutional use. A lot of the, I think all the churches in some fashion are connected or have relationships with the homeless shelter organization and are in support of the homeless shelter operation and this project. So that gives you kind of a concept of what's the current land use is around the site and the amount of vacant land that might be in the future developed around that site. As I mentioned, the existing land use is predominantly either medical office or religious institution. But moving forward and thinking ahead, if you look at our master plan, the planned uses for that area, both along the major thoroughfare there and as well as north of where the facility's going to be located, is all designated for continued use for religious institutions, multiple-family residential, senior and assisted living housing, and professional offices. So the site, the proposed use would fit nicely within not only what is there presently, but what is planned in the future. And of course, the motion was approved unanimously by the planning commission to recommend to the city council that the rezoning take place. And again, the special use is approved pending the outcome of the rezoning action by this Yeah, the, the current site is owned by the Church of the Nazarene. I think pending the outcome of all these actions, it would then transfer to the New Hope Shelter at such time as they got all the necessary approvals. And so that, that's basically it in summary.
It's an interesting project for the community, moving the shelter over there. It's probably a good location.
They have a building that was donated to them. It was like a charter school building.
On the property?
They're going to put there. They had to move it off from wherever it was at, downstate. And so they took it apart and they've moved it up here, and then they're going to rebuild it for this shelter.
Sounds like a major undertaking.
Yeah. That's going to be the shelter?
Uh-huh.
Wow.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Interesting.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending the zoning map and set a public hearing for May 20th, 2019.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Swolman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment this week.
Actually, I'm sorry, but there is another item that is on your agenda, but not on the blue line. It didn't make it on the blue line. But if you look at your agenda, there is an adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
I did see that.
Oh, I apologize.
It's.
But that's not on this one.
Right, it's on, it's not on that, it's on here.
Oh.
Consumers Energy.
Yeah, my apologies.
They baked this out.
So, we're not opening for public comment?
Not yet.
So it just wasn't on the blue line? So it just wasn't on the blue line?
Here, the blue line, yep.
No, I've got mine up here, thank you.
From time to time, mayor members of the city council, we have to approve resolutions amending our Consumers Energy contract. This one is with regard to the replacement of failed light fixtures with more efficient LED fixtures. I can attest that I've seen consumers out in the community replacing some of the antiquated, what I've come to know as Cobra Head style lighting fixtures with newer, more flat-looking angular LED heads. The light is, I think, a cleaner light and certainly a more directed light as well. Doesn't seem to create that sort of orangish glow that proliferates the night sky. So it's a much better look. And the necessary action this evening would be consideration of this resolution to allow them to continue in doing so, so that it can be reflective on our contract with them.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the amendment to the Consumers Energy contract and to approve the new contract. I should probably read the motion that's in front of me because I'm reading, oh, I guess we don't have one.
You don't have one?
No, you, the...
I don't want to read those long numbers.
That's okay.
Those old, the con, to approve the amendment to the Consumers Energy contract that ends in 5462, and then to approve the new Consumers contract that ends in 7816, noting that the streetlight costs are paid from the Public Works Department and the General Fund.
Support.
Well done.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you for the catch.
Sorry.
Now. We'll open the floor for our second public comment.
Let me just do this here. Again, May 2nd Cadillac paper. Township Cadillac Junction decisions lead to future court dates. Second, I want to congratulate our president, Donald Trump, for the job he's doing. Lowest unemployment rate, economy's doing great. And for Attorney General Barr for not showing up in front of Congress today and refusing to show up. He did, he did the right thing. Again, city water rates, we cannot raise them next week. Couple and one, two quick items. Marcus was allowed to leave out of state. He's the first city manager to go to a meeting out of state. Maybe we could have teleconference those meetings, Marcus. That's costing city taxpayers money. Hey, if, while you're leaving out of state, why don't you take the clock tower? Just keep on going. And, and, I don't want to pop nobody's bubble, which I have been. But you know, the city park and all is public property. So we should be able to use that without, at any time, city docks, whatever, at any time. Again, I don't want to say this, but you know, that gentleman's company is one of the main polluters in the city of Cadillac. And it's costing the citizens of Cadillac money. They pump out the maximum amount of styrene into our air, almost 99 percent, and they violated their wastewater discharge permits for over 20 years or longer. So I just wanted to let you know that. But you gotta, guys, gotta take in consideration that this is all city property. Citizens of Cadillac own this. And if they want to use the docks, even during the car show, they want to go down there, the beer fest, they don't, they should be able to use the property at any time. And I hope everybody's happy about the New Hope Shelter. If it's close to your property or homes or something. It's going to be a nice facility where the churches are and the children are out playing on the playgrounds at the church and all the homeless people are there with them. That's going to be a nice setting.
Thank you. Okay. And then, does anyone have anything for the good of the order this evening?
I do, mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments this evening. First of all, there are two great opportunities coming up on Saturday. The Clean Up the Parks Day, our spring cleanup. Information is available on that event on our website and on our city Facebook site as well, as well as at our front counter and in other places around the community. Additionally...
Did we have anybody contact us yet? Any groups that are committed? Yeah, good. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay. Also, on Saturday is the collaborative hazardous, household hazardous waste drop-off day as well. Collaborative being that the city and the county have worked together in putting these on. We're also looking ahead for having a couple of more as we go on into next year as well. But it's the same, same day is when the drop-off is. So if folks are looking at helping and volunteering in our parks, that would be wonderful. Additionally, in their own homes, this is a great way to get rid of unused paint or other chemicals and materials that you might have that you're not quite sure what to do with. Also, I would like to just correct a couple of things that were essentially testified to earlier this evening regarding extension of public utilities to the property, commonly known as the Terry D property or Cadillac Junction. The information that was shared this evening is completely inaccurate. All of the costs associated with extending that infrastructure was paid for by the developer. And then the developer, once it was put in, conveyed at no cost that infrastructure to the city. The city was required to upgrade its pumps and lift station by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality for the entire east side sewer infrastructure that we have, that piece included. That serves not just that Terry D or Cadillac Junction area, but also serves the new jail site and serves other commercial and residential areas along the east side of town. But the information that was provided this evening was just simply factually inaccurate. Additionally, factually inaccurate was a comment made about me being the first city manager to travel out of state. That's just simply not, not true. And then the issue regarding use of automatic weapons. The City of Cadillac does not own or operate automatic weapons. We may, at some point, we don't at this moment. But we do have a partnership and collaborative with Michigan State Police and with other law enforcement agencies with respect to the use of our range and facilities. It's certainly possible that they may have, that they may have been using automatic firearms as a part of a training exercise. I can state that that facility has been in place and operational since the 1980s and that this is the first time, at least to my knowledge, that we've had concerns brought to our attention. I'm not trying to say that there isn't a concerning issue out there. However, the location of the facilities intentionally are in an area where it's protected by 30 to 40-foot-plus berm. And it is very much out of, out of the way from all, all activities aside from our cemetery that's located on the top of that berm, so. Thank you.
Have we had any other complaints about the firing range?
No.
I can add that my office is within 300 yards. It is not a problem. I mean, it's good to see our community used by law enforcement for the training that it has.
Do you hear it when they're having a training?
If I'm outside in my parking lot, you can hear it. It's not poured inside the office, absolutely not.
I can hear it in my house, but not if like a fan's on in my office. So it's very small. Takes you a second to figure out what it is. And it's always during the daytime, too. It's never an obtrusive hour.
And it's not every day either.
Interesting. See how you had something?
I do. I'd like to just say a couple of words about the Earth Day event that was last, not this past weekend, but the one before. We had a lot of people come out. We had a lot of vendors. I'd like to thank all the folks from the city that helped make all that possible. And the youth council volunteered in the children's area. We gave away hundreds of trees and reusable tote bags and all kinds of fun things. It was, it was a really good community event. I appreciate that. Also, with regards to the youth council, we are growing. There have been several more members who've been approved, whatever. Have they been sworn in yet? We're going to do the swearing in. At the next meeting, we'll do a swearing in of the new members. And there are more that have applied. So keep the word out because if you're a young person who would like to participate in your community in a way that impacts other youth and other people in the community, the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council is your kind of place.
Thank you.
I know that you asked if there were any groups that came or have come forward for the cleanup day. Marty Williams, who works at Group Benito, and he is on the Lake Mitchell Improvement Board and with the Cadillac Land Conservancy is getting, he has a group together that's gonna, they're hoping to do a cleanup of the entire Clam River within the city limits, which is a huge undertaking. I have cleaned portions of the Clam River before. That's very commendable that they're trying to do the whole stretch of it. They, they've connected with the city and so I think that we're going to be able to support them in their efforts. There's a group, there's a class or two from the high school that's going to come and help. But if anybody wants to do that, that starts at nine o'clock, I believe. And it's a great effort to clean up the Clam River. And Group Benito, I know, has donated to that cause, so we really appreciate that. Wanted to comment a little bit on the concerns that Jamie Sterns has brought forward. And I know that the city is working with her and I really appreciate that. And our recycling program. And, you know, I know that some recyclers can't take every single product that other recyclers can, but it really depends on the aftermarket. And of course, in order to run a recycle, recycling company, you have to be able to pay your bills. And you know, you have to maybe be a little bit profitable and so that you can make a living off of them. So I think they're doing their best to try to find aftermarkets that are economically, you know, feasible for them to take certain products. And sometimes that doesn't happen. And we all know that we've got limited uses of recyclable products now, especially since China has stopped taking them. So that's probably part of the issue. But, you know, the other thing is, is it's the only recycling company, I believe, that we have in town. I think they're doing a great job. I, you know, as a council member, I haven't heard of any complaints about their service or the work that they do. So it's unfortunate that, you know, this is happening, but I can appreciate Jamie's concerns, too. And I, I hope that we can come to some resolution on it. But I think for the price, we've got a really good deal. And I was a council member when we put that in and I know you were too. Were you with us then, Carla? I think that was before your time, yeah. You know, we thought, fought, thought long and hard about whether or not to implement something like that and we just felt like we were doing the right thing. And we've been able to keep the cost really manageable. It's unfortunate that more people don't take advantage of it. I would agree with Jamie that we probably could use more education, constant education to the public about why it's important to recycle and what it is that we can recycle. And then, probably the most important message is, let's stop using a lot. So if we reduce our use, especially with things like single-use plastics, that would go a long way. I'll stop.
If I can just quickly interject, I forgot to mention, I did meet with our resident this morning. I also have a meeting set up later this week with our service provider. And last week, the city was in communication with the service provider. And the service provider has agreed to slightly adjust how they're going to be collecting the materials so that all of the materials are going to be collected now at the curb. They'll then conduct their final sorting essentially at their recycling facility, thereby reducing potential, you know, chances for some errors and not collecting certain things. Because currently, some of the recyclables that may be collectible aren't, or vice versa. But this way, it's all just going to get swept up at the curb. And so from a customer service perspective, the resident or the customer is not going to need to worry necessarily about whether or not there's something being left and why is it being left, you know? So it's all going to just get taken care of at the sorting facility.
All right. Okay, we do need to go into closed session this evening.
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Wexford County Circuit Court's consolidated case numbers, 13-24803CH and 17-27610CZ. Terry D LLC et al. versus Clam Lake Township and Herring Charter Township versus City of Cadillac and Hop Family LLC and City of Cadillac versus Herring Charter Township and Clam Lake Township. And the City of Cadillac versus Lake Mitchell Sewer Authority, State of Michigan, 28th Judicial Circuit Court, case number 2018-28350CZ. And we'd like to invite Jeff Dietl, the Director of Utilities.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Krista, thank you for...
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, mayor and members of the city council. There is one item to report this evening in regard to the current litigation with the Lake Mitchell Sewer Authority. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney, who will present a motion for your consideration.
Thank you, city council. We have had an opportunity to discuss a revised contract submitted by the Lake Mitchell Sewer Authority through council. The basic framework of the revision is really to extend the contract to, from the existing 21-year agreement to 40-year agreement. That also serves the authority because they are seeking some financing through USDA rural development. So the rate structure stays the same. It just pushes it out to 40 years instead of 21. And so I would recommend that the city approve the revised contract with the Lake Mitchell Sewer Authority and authorize the city manager and city attorney to review and approve any and all changes to the contract, provided that such revisions do not affect the material terms of the contract, and authorize the city attorney to dismiss the lawsuit without costs or attorney fees when the, when the contract is executed.
Isn't that what we originally proposed, was the 40-year contract?
It is.
I would love to make that motion.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.